I'd like to call to order the board work session for June. And the first item on the agenda is the 2020 budget calendar. Tom, would you take that, please?
On page three of the work packet, you'll see that we're entering that kind of year in preparation with a 2020 budget. Just as a reminder, we prepare three budgets for the board. The first is the operating budget, which is all our expenses and attractive revenue and those types of things. Then we have a capital budget. And once those two are created and you get to a little further down the road on those being approved, then we create the financial budget. Some organizations refer to that as the cash flow budget. And given that our finances are on a -- because the expenditure of the $1 million is stumped up, the cash flow budget will be a very important budget for this coming year and for later years because we'll have to very closely track our cash flow. So all three of those budgets will be prepared. If you turn to page five, you can see the calendar that we are proposing. This is a very similar calendar as has been used in previous years. Doesn't mean that it can't be changed, but it is the same calendar that we have been using for the last several years. You'll see that on July 1, we start where we go to all the committees and ask for their input on capital projects and on operating projects. An example of an operating project from a couple of years ago is the Lakes Committee talked about increasing the number of Lake Rangers. So that would not impact the capital budget, it would impact the operating budget. So we don't limit the committees just to capital projects. The recommendations from the committees are then submitted back to management by August 16. On August 19, we start working, the department heads start working on the capital projects, getting bids on those. And then on the 29th of August, they start working on the budget itself, the operating budget. The operating budget is the one that takes the most amount of time, it's the largest, the most comprehensive. We have them start on August 29 because we want them to be, we want to be beyond the season. For example, for recreation, they are busiest during the summer, so we try and delay it as long as possible so that they can be focused on our membership. And then it starts to taper off a little bit towards the end of August, and that's when we have them start working on those things. You'll see here, we also prepare a fee schedule. Those are the recommendations, whether there would be an increase or maybe there's a recommendation that there won't be an increase. It then goes through a review process. So everybody is aware, when the budgets are reviewed, they are reviewed by the CFO, Dwayne, and myself. We go line by line, month by month, we look at every single number. Our managers that prepare the budget, they've come a long way in the last several years, but we still have some that are better at numbers than others. So we really, the review timeframe is where we can really define it and so forth. We submit the budget, the operating and the capital budget on January 25 to the board directors. For internal purposes, on the 31st of that same month, we do a practice. It's an internal practice, but we wanted to just make sure that they're all ready to go and ready for the presentation. The practices were a little about four to several years ago, and they were about three or four years, four years ago prior to my arrival. The department heads did not write their budget at all. So it was three years ago, they had to write their budget and then present their budget to the board. That was a significant shift for them. So we review practices. The practices are a little bit less important now because now we have a very stable senior staff who worked several years. And so the practices are a little bit less important, but practice is always a good thing. We're proposing that on November 7, we will present to the entire board. Presentation will begin at 9:00 a.m. Feedback and adjustments will be made. And by the one week later, we would have the work session meeting at 6:00 p.m. at Reardon Hall. By then, the financial budget would be prepared. And we would present to the entire community. And then assuming everything goes well and the board is pleased with the budget, it would then be approved at the end of November 21st meeting at 6:00.
Do you have any questions?
I do. I have one on the fee schedule that says competitive market analysis completed. Who does that for those employees? If you guys have something else.
We do that internally. But we include in the board packet, we include the competitive market analysis. We've had board members double check on their own to confirm that the numbers are accurate for our competition and so forth. But we do it internally to save funds.
Can we know ahead of time which departments are going to market?
Absolutely. It's typically golf, rec, F&amp;B. Laysall, but we haven't done Laysall previously. I think that's it. That's the only ones that we've done previously, unless you feel that we should add an additional one.
I think that's everything. I think that's everything.
Oh, yeah. Once you hit golf and rec, that's pretty, that covers just about everything. But we'll include that as we always do, just so you can see. Now, one of the conversations Jerry had with Ruth and myself is on the meeting on November 7, we typically are giving each of the department heads about a half an hour to make their presentation. The reason why we're having each of the department heads come in each month and make a presentation at the GM meeting is because in the previous years, about half of that half an hour budget review was on operational questions that really didn't have too much to do with the budget, but on departmental structure. So what we're trying to do is have those questions taken care of months prior to the budget review so that the 30 minutes of presentation can be focused strictly on the budget, hopefully. Since we have 12 department heads, you're looking at a half an hour. I have, at my previous community, we made it a two-day process, and it was more of an hour-long presentation. That is an option for the board, but it's a grind. So that's at your discretion, the board's discretion as to what they want to do. Some board members at my previous location felt that 30 minutes was shortchanging department. But when you talk about 12 departments, it's a lot. It's a lot. It's a very long day, even at a half hour each. Any comments, questions?
I like the calendar. Thanks for doing that. So should we assume that the budget will not include any sort of assessment increase?
We always write the budget assuming without. If an assessment increase is approved, then it has, it doesn't have as many changes to the budget as one would then. It changes the revenue, it changes the fee structures a little bit, it changes our capital budget, but it really doesn't have that many. So it's very easy to go in, if an assessment increase was approved by the membership, it would be very easy to go in and modify the budget quickly. So we always go in with the assumption that we're not going to have an assessment increase.
Do we see any one-time events? For example, we saw the cell tower lease sales. Do we see any one-time events coming up in 2020 that might be material?
I think that the stump dump is a wild card, especially the legal side of that. That could be a large expense that could hit us. You know, are we going to get any insurance proceeds? Those types of things. You know, we're sitting in June, and you're asking me a question that's going to happen in January or February, so there's a long way away. But at this point, other than the stump dump, I would say nothing off the top of my head.
Because rebate came this year, so we won't be able to make sure.
And each, and for the new board members, each of the department heads prepares what we call a delta report. And that includes not only the numbers, but a description as to what's occurring. If my labor in Lakes is going up because I'm increasing the number of Lake Rangers from blah to blah, and that's going to cost me this much more in these months, so we don't just give you the numbers, we give you the story behind it.
And changes from one year to next, plus or minus.
Okay. And then I assume there'll also be some sort of debt repayment schedule for the water department?
That's included, yes, that is included. And it's also part, that specific element is part of the financial or cash flow budget because that has a significant, that has a, you know, the half a million dollars in bond repayment is significant, and that gets covered in the cash flow budget, financial
No questions? No other questions on that? Move on to the golf committee recommendation regarding future Brittany. And Jason Roy, the head of the golf department, or the golf J C is here to help us with answering any questions that's there. We appreciate that, Jason.
On page seven of your work packet, you will see that I put together a brief memo regarding the recommendations from the committee. And then on pages nine and 10, you have the recommendation straight from the committee. One of the items that was discussed during the GM meeting, and this actually came out of the rec committee, the golf committee meeting, was the possibility or the consideration of creating a Brittany subcommittee. If you look on page 10, the golf committee has come up with a number of ideas, and the idea would be to have a subcommittee to shepherd through those ideas and make sure that this is not a one and done type situation where a year from now we go, oh, we came up with all these recommendations and what has happened. But this committee would be an ad hoc committee that would be on an occasional basis to ensure that we are shepherding through those ideas and not just putting them down on paper and then forgetting them two months later.
Come from the golf committee itself?
The committee, but what was discussed in the GM meeting was that we would ask the golf committee to do that. But in reality, the idea came, it was discussed at their meeting.
Could you see that subcommittee liaising with, in terms of management, to see things happen?
I think that we were, well, we didn't discuss that, but I think that we had the expression of the golf committee as to who would be on the committee.
If they want one of the liaisons, it would be one of the liaisons from the golf committee.
And then talking to the human managers is, I guess, what I'm wondering. Would they talk to maybe Daryl, the marketing department?
Daryl would be through marketing, both. These are going to be a lot of cross-reference to a lot of departments to carry all these out. Okay, further discussion. Eric, go ahead.
I'd like to see two things added to this. One relates to what we were just talking about. In addition to having a subcommittee that tracks these things, perhaps on a quarterly basis, I'd like to see in the golf newsletter, email newsletter, a status so that the membership can see what's going on. And if they're not filling out to their end of our dinner, we're not correcting that. The other thing is, and I've probably beaten this one to death before, I'd really like to see a date specified where this whole thing will be reevaluated. Ruth made the point that it's probably going to take two years to see any results.
Yeah, because most of these things are going to take some time to implement. And then we've already noticed that there are some golf groups that have switched their group over to Brittany, so they are helping us out in that manner. But to implement a lot of these, Jason, is that fair to say that we're looking at at least a year to two years before they really get put into effect?
Yes, because--
Before we can measure them?
Yeah, at this time, we're halfway through the season now, so it's going to take at least a year, a couple of years definitely looking to review.
So maybe put a date of July 2021.
I would recommend that we go through the next season also, so not only this season, but next season, September, October. Yeah, I would probably do October as far, you know, let's get beyond the entire season because any changes that would be made at that point, either in marketing and so forth, it would then allow us to do that over the winter time and then kick in for the following season. But that would give you two full seasons because Jason's right, we're already halfway through, so you come up and marketing comes up for golf, it's a great idea. It may take a month or so to get implemented, and you're only going to have partial impact for the year. Plus, we already know that the rounds for Brittany are going to be down this year potentially directly as a result of being closed for several weeks as a result of the setup.
I think the two years would be a fair estimate. I like the idea of having a closure date that we can look at and say, okay, where's the situation?
Should it be tied somehow with what happens at Burksdale? Where that's a nine-hole course, and there was some discussion about other rounds would transfer there?
Well, if Burksdale floats away, then the interim is certainly going to change our outlook. That'll be taken into account.
Yeah, well, I mean, Steve is correct. We could take all these ideas, implement them to the best of our ability, and we could still see the rounds shed at Brittany. I don't know if that's what you're talking about.
Well, I was assuming if we close, Burksdale might shift the other way back to Brittany.
Very well could, if very well could.
So I'm not sure if that should be part of the reassessment timing.
I would think it'd be added into that for sure.
I would think that'd be an automatic, if Burksdale closes, those rounds probably will go someplace, and probably Brittany would be a chance for some of the nine hole at least yet. But that would be a kind of an exterior component of this.
That's it.
We're still going to get our monthly rounds. Every month, we're going to get a report on that. What it's costing us to do this, are we going to find out? We're telling them to begin planning to do some review, that I'm sure Daryl and other managers are going to come up with that. The best thing to do is find, you can do that, marketing is our cost of money out there. So we're going to track that on a monthly basis, just like we have in the floor, correct?
Correct.
So we can see, we don't have to wait two years to see what's happening. We can see that probably in the next year, we probably won't see it this year, we might. We'll see it in the next year in our monthly reporting of the monthly meetings, where we'll see how the rounds are playing, what's it costing us. And at that point, it might be up to this subcommittee and/or some of the managers to reevaluate what they're doing, to refine it, put it a little different direction. I'm glad to see that somebody, one of my questions from the end, I was a red this, we're going to furnish clubs for beginners. Does beginners mean adults as well, or are we talking primarily juniors?
Yeah, it's both. It's always--
And the Friends of Dogwood are going to buy clubs for that? We don't have rental clubs out of that field, right?
We have rental--
Yeah, we have rental--
But that's an issue, if you are a brand-new golfer that has never played before, the idea of paying $30 to rent clubs and to pay another so much for balls and stuff like that that you don't have, you've already got $60, $70 in a round of golf that you don't know if you want to play or not. And in Bella Vista, there are a lot of used good clubs that can be out here. There's one set out here that I can point to right here. But there's a lot of good clubs that are available to donate to, and if you're not paying that $30, you're more likely to take a family out, especially if we have kids clubs along with it. But along David's line, there's going to be some expenses, and there's going to be a few of these that are going to be a cost to try that don't work. And so there's going to be some additional expenses to start with that the rounds may not equal out. And that's what you have to weed out and find out. And I think that's what David's kind of alluding to, that we need to be looking at that. But I think we need to give it plenty of time to really give it an honest attempt, but also need an end date that says this is not going to go on for the next five years because somebody thought of something new to try. So it's, we're going to see if it works.
And to your question, there is a campaign out right now for donations to the area for clubs, and there's been a little bit of change in Friends of Highland, or Friends, sorry, Friends of Dogwood, there's now starting to be a hybrid of that and also a Friends of Brittany, so they're working hard, trying to figure it out.
Susan, do you want to interject on that?
Yes, I absolutely do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Absolutely. The effort to get donated clubs is really not a very practical idea from the golf operation standpoint. We don't want to get a bunch of weird stuff, okay? So one of the things the Friends of Dogwood is talking about, you know, pretty seriously, is in our, we're having a tournament in September, and to also have a tournament on Brittany, and use the proceeds from that to buy clubs for juniors and then some inexpensive half-set kind of things for begetting adults, right? So that we have bags, we have clubs that match, and that they can manage them from the cart perspective, okay?
If you weren't familiar with the clubs, you shouldn't go make--
What?
If you wouldn't play with the clubs today, you should not--
I mean, because it's just, I mean, Paul, I think legitimately is concerned, we're going to get a whole bunch of mismatched stuff, you know, and we really want it to look good, be professional, that people can--
Give them a chance.
Can do that. There's been some discussion about another group forming. There's, I know Paul's had some discussion with some of the people there. I'm not sure they're that interested in doing it. Friends of Dogwood has always been Friends of Dogwood and Brittany. We just haven't done much with Brittany, right? So I'm going to put that more on the radar and market more to some of these people who seem to have an interest. We'll see if the interest turns into participation with that. And the other thing I just want to make a note of is, most of the things we put on this list were specifically low-cost events. I mean, doing emails and the newsletters does not cost a lot of money, and it doesn't take a lot of time. So I don't want to waste the season talking about it. You know, we need to get together, decide what we're going to do, and start stuff this year, okay? At least that's my perspective from a marketing standpoint on it. Because we aren't going to market to the general public. I mean, not the general public, outside of Bella Vista. This is really a neighborhood course, we need Bella Vista's to support it.
How many members, Jason, do you feel would be a good ad hoc committee? Three?
Probably three.
And then maybe one liaison, and Daryl?
Yeah.
So you picked Laysall also. Kim also would be obvious for Kim.
Committee members. Committee members, three, and then two other members. The employees, the liaison would not be members of the committee, they were being liaison partners for assistance.
Because I know one issue when First Tee started up, except they asked for clubs, and they, everybody cleaned out their basement that didn't sell it, garage sales, everything else, and they have probably 100 sets that are unusable with no idea what to do with them.
Not anymore. What to do with those clubs that are-- The problem with getting donated clubs for juniors that are too heavy. And so junior clubs have to be shorter and wider. You can't cut down an adult club and make it usable for a junior. And the only time we could use adult clubs was for our older kids out there, you know, they were taller than I am, they could use those. So what we did with those clubs is we turned them into trash, sold. They can go to recycling, some heads, shafts, everything. You can sell those and make a few bucks off of it, just like picking up empty--
Soaps.
So that's what we do with those. Unless there's a set that is actually something usable, then you can go online and find a place and you can sell those. One of the guys we play golf with, Hayden, that's what he does, he goes on and he sells them online, but there are a couple of places there, you can see the value of something. I don't want to see us just mishmash a set of clubs. You can go down to Golf Academy, or you can go online and buy a set of clubs that maybe has a driver three wood, six hybrid, seven, nine wedge, seven, nine sand wedge and putter for under 200 bucks with a bag.
And we're, because it's Brittany, it's a short nine hole, even a half, you know, four clubs on the putter would hit the target market for this activity in most cases.
And it's a lot better because it's a lighter set.
Right, it's the right size, right size set.
Any other ideas or questions, good Jim?
Just a thought, possible suggestion. I really like this idea of a subcommittee, but hopefully you'll make it include the residents and the friends in that area, maybe not on the committee, maybe on the committee. Let you guys decide, but the residents of the public meetings sure support keeping Brittany, and I hope, as Susan mentioned as well, they'll step up to the plate.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. Is there a possibility of sending a letter to those residents? I mean, they were very vocal about wanting it and wanting to do all of these ideas. Can we send a letter to them, reminding them when the golf committee meeting is to join it, to volunteer, to help keep it open? We do an email. Because we don't have a list of the people that attended that meeting.
Did we separate them out, Kim? Just when we sent letters to them, all we sent letters to those residents around there as letters and reviews, letters, actual letters, so we don't have to remuse, do we?
Not necessarily.
Anything else?
I want to make sure we don't omit the obvious, the board is in favor of keeping Brittany up.
I want to hear all the input first. Anybody else that hasn't spoken have an idea or suggestion or input? Okay. The board will be voting next week to carry this forward. I'm assuming they look for the positive. Let's ask for a consensus vote at this time. This is not a vote, this is simply a consensus so that they know, the committee knows that we've got to go ahead. So all of those who would support the idea at this time for next week's vote, can we have a vote?
It's important to keep it open.
Yeah, it's important for the board, or J C, to go ahead. So it appears we have enough to vote for next year or next week so that you can start making plans towards that direction. I assume that's going to happen, Jason. But we can't vote officially until next week. Okay? And if at any time, obviously we'll discuss this again next week, so if new things come up and you think of them, please bring them to next week's meeting and we'll discuss again, because Jason will be here again for that. Thank you, Jason, we appreciate you stepping in today, and it helped us out.
On page 11 of your work packet, you'll see a recommendation from the golf committee, a nomination for a new committee member there to nominate Mr. Merks. On page 12, you will see his association committee application. On the following page, on page 13, you'll see the recommendation or the nomination from the Lakes Committee for a new member, Mr. Adams. And on the following page, you will see-- And on the following page, you will see an adjunct's application also.
And we'll be voting both of those next Thursday?
Yes.
So we should check out those applications to vote those. And they both, I think, were recommended with lots of background, so.
Yeah. Both candidates or both nominated individuals were unanimously approved by the respective committee. On page 15, just a notification. The good news is that the Highland Stuntup, now the Highland, to give you a little bit of a historical perspective, Highland Stuntup was, had been open for 35 years. It was closed by order of ADEQ. On May 29th, ADEQ approved our plans to remediate the site. These plans had been prepared by FTN. So that is really good. We are reasonably optimistic that we will be able to complete the work by the end of the year. Don't hold this to that. It could be a month or so after that, but our goal is the end of the year. The downside of this is that at the time that we were preparing the budget, we had absolutely no idea how much it was going to cost, because we had just hired FTN. They hadn't even started working on preparing plans for ADEQ. So we put in $100,000 into the operating budget. We now have the total cost estimate at $326,000. And that does not include, they are asking for a 30% contingency. The reason why the contingency is much higher than you would normally see is because part of the plans are going to have to, they're going to have to do test holes to find the edges, because it could be larger or smaller depending upon, you know, what you can see from the surface. Remember, this is 35 years old, this site. So, you know, it's hard to know exactly where the edges are. So that's why it has much higher contingency than what you would normally see. So no additional approval is required by the board. This is an operating expense. We're just letting you know that our budget is going to take a significant hit as a result of this. And with regards to cash flow, I'm going to talk later on about, it provides the board nothing regarding the sale of Arc Mo. But the secured loan that we had, we originally were talking about, our cash flow was for $1 million. Arc Mo is scheduled to or contracted to sell for the full appraised value, which is $1,475,000. So effectively, what we're doing is we're going to take that $475,000 extra and apply it to the excess on taking care of the Highland Stuntup. We have still not heard anything regarding the other three dumps. We have plans into ADEQ. I've been told that we should not be concerned in any way. ADEQ has a lot going on their plate right now as a result of the flooding in other parts of the state. So I'm not concerned that it's taking a little bit longer than we hoped to get the answer on the other three sites. But Steve, when we were talking about, you know, unknowns for next year, you know, we don't know when we're going to get a final answer from ADEQ regarding the other three sites. We're hopeful that those are going to be able to be closed for a reasonable amount of money, but until we get the final answer from ADEQ, we won't know for certain.
The three older sites, aren't they pretty much overgrown at this point?
They're all overgrown. The one site was closed 10 to 15 years ago. The other two sites were closed 20 to 25 years ago. They are completely overgrown. We are optimistic that ADEQ will formally close them in their mind, in their eyes, at a reasonable expense. But until we get a response back from ADEQ, we won't know for certain.
The Highland Stuntup is not overgrown?
It is not overgrown because it was still in operation at the time that we were ordered to close it. Any questions?
Just a comment. I really recognize FTN as leaders in their field. However, FTN originally was hopeful that we could do three six-inch layers of clay to cover the Highland Stuntup. And part of that $100,000 was their estimation. And now, again, we're being added to significantly with a 30% modifier. And I do recognize David's more versed in this than I am, that these geocentric clay liners are common practice in the covering of landfills and other, even some golf course type covers. But requiring us to do this in regards to a stuntup anyway, I'm still agreeing that we should do it, but come on.
We do what the experts do.
Yeah.
Tom, in that regard, are we looking to ERM at all in that, what we might have to do there? Dave come up with an argument with ADEQ saying we don't have to have the geotextual? Or is this going to be such a hard-to-do ADEQ thing that we'll just have to do?
They have stated that these plans are approved and I think we're bad, they're off proceeding as is.
We don't have a final plan yet for Trafalgar, right?
Not yet, no. We're working on it, but not just, not yet.
Does this pause give us any idea what the powder radiation might be inside, compared to like size of Highlands versus Trafalgar?
The two sites are so significantly different, it's hard. I did provide ERM with a copy of the approved plans for Highlands to see if that could help them, you know, shape their plans. But it's, there's such different sites, what I've been told. I'm not an expert in this field, but I've been told that the sites are very different. And so we're working, you know, I'm just going to, based upon these plasters, I'm just going to flow into the next item on the agenda, which is the Trafalgar Fire Site. You know, first off, I'm very pleased that the fire is out. All trench burning is complete. The air curtain technology, which we were renting those things, Daryl, it had already been taken away. So we're done. We did a drone flight on Monday, so we've not seen our website recently. Take a look at that. That gives you a real good view of what it looks like. The only thing you can't really tell from the drone footage is this extreme change in elevation from where the weir is located to the upper section is 130-foot drop. Is that correct?
It's not quite that much, but it's
It's significant. And when you look at it on the drone footage, it kind of looks flat. It flattens it out, so it's significant. So stabilization of the site is, they're still working on that to ensure the stability. You know, I think it's hard to say exactly how much that effort's going to take, but I'm much more optimistic than early on when we started the process. If you recall, we were talking about an estimate of $4 million, but it could go higher depending upon how things go. Things have gone very well, so I'm still sticking with that $4 million estimate. But, you know, you could still see a swing of a quarter million bucks based upon how things go. But that's much better than, at one point, I was thinking, wow, we could spend four, but we could hit five or six million. We're now looking at four and maybe four and four, something to that magnitude.
Including your team?
The whole thing. The estimates that we provided, the $4 million plus or minus, was always the phase one, phase two, the whole thing. What we didn't want to do was give you only half the information, you know, because that would only, you know, we want to make sure that we give you the whole, the whole estimate and not have everybody focus on $4 million. Okay, $4 million for this, and then plus, plus, plus. We didn't want to do that. We feel it's going to come in pretty darn close to the $4 million, but you're going to need to give us a latitude of quarter to half a million bucks because we still have some unknowns out there. But we're definitely getting much closer now than we have previously. And by this time next week, we're going to know even more so, I think.
Now, is trench burning done?
It's completely done. They finished on Monday. It was later than we originally had anticipated, but the rain is just, you know, Doug and I had a conversation the other day. If we hadn't had such an abnormal amount of rain, I wouldn't be surprised if we would have come in a half a million dollars less, because, you know, we had a lot of rain early on when we were having to shut down the site and it was, you know, when they were heavily into fighting the fire, you know, our hourly rate at that point was like $10,000. There was times that we had to shut down for four or five hours. So those, you know, that's expensive shutdowns. But even as we started going away from the fighting of the fire, we still had lengthy shutdowns. There's some drone footage, there's two drone footages, two different dates where you see the equipment is not moving at all for an entire day because it's just so wet, because those are expensive days.
So what are they doing now?
They're stabilizing the site. So that, and that was part of, you know, you can't just put out the fire. You've got to make sure that all that stuff's not going to wash downstream. And when you're dealing with an elevation change of under 130 feet, that's extreme. So we have a surveyor that is working with us, you know, and making sure that when they grade this site, it is to the specs that ADEQ has dictated. As specs that we have provided to ADEQ and they have a review in the accurate term.
And has air quality monitored, Terry? Is that suspended?
That's, yeah, that's, the equipment was sent home once we stopped the trench burning.
Okay. Other questions? Not for the moment.
It's the sale of Arc Mo. Just wanted to give everybody an update on that. The agreement was executed with Recasting LLC on May 31st. We are anticipating to be able to close in 60 days. We've been in contact with the insurance company and all the other things that you have to do. We've been providing them with the copies of previous surveys and so forth. So it appears to be moving along nicely without any hiccups at this time.
We have also been in contact with the attorney for Recasting and we're working together on drafting various assignments and things like that for me.
And just for clarification for the public, the entire parcel was included?
Yes, I saw it there in 60 days.
I exposed so much of the sound back. And I want to be sure that everybody knows the entire parcel.
This is the, is the arbitral in the jury party?
Okay. Any other questions on that? We have conflict of interest now.
So it's required that we update these annually? And the members of the board have signed these before they were put on the ballot, signing updated conflict of interest forms from the other members of the board? Do you guys have copies of these? And if you could redo those and sign them and you come back to me, please, so that I can It's also part of our audit procedure, so whenever we have an external audit, they ask us for copies of these statements as well, so.
Make sure Doug gets a copy of the document.
If you recall, going back two minutes, the board talked about making modification to the board attendance policy. The Rules and Regulations Committee is going to take this issue up on June 27th. They're going to meet immediately after the completion of the regular meeting. So that will be the subject matter of that meeting.
Okay. At this time, open forum. We want to remind you that you have three minutes to speak, please. Bruce?
Bruce Portillo, 3 Kirk Circle, Bella Vista. I wanted to compliment Mr. Dooley on a well-written letter to the editor last week with a couple of exceptions. Our previous board licensed our common property for use by the public without the required membership vote. If there was a required membership vote, the board would have done so. They marketed Bella Vista as a tourist destination. The POA has never marketed Bella Vista using that terminology. We must have confused this with the city, but I'll let that slip. And then finally, we want to retain the unique qualities to make Bella Vista the best place in the country to live. I couldn't agree more with him. And I've placed a list up here, which is on the site. There were 27 projects completed by the board and management over the last three years. And these projects were big and small, and they involved new builds, they involved restoration, and they involved updates. And some of these projects, like the BD Bar and Grill, have been met with a great measure of success. Admittedly, the place is open to the public. I'll say that. But regardless, it has taken old, worn-out facilities in the village and restored them, and they're seeing a lot of use. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Bruce.
Good morning, everyone. Kevin Dooley, 122 Lyster Drive. Let me start by welcoming Steve and Tia and Jerry to the board, and thank you for your service. And thanks to everyone on the board for your service as well. I've spoken about members feeling that they have been left behind by the direction that the board have been going. Specifically, the perception has been that there's been too much emphasis on public access and not enough emphasis on the membership. A couple of board directors have told me that members elect directors to make these decisions. I see it a little bit differently. I believe that we elect directors to represent our decisions. So when Steve decided to run for the board on the simple platform of members first, that was something that really resonated. And obviously, it resonated with thousands of other members as well. So I believe this election is a mandate from the membership that every discussion, every decision has to be looked at from the perspective of what is the possible benefit to the membership? And equally importantly, what are the possible negative impacts to the membership? So I hope that we're all on the same page with that. I can't say it any better than Steve has said it. Always members first.
I can assure you, Kevin, that this entire board has always had the best interest of the membership in mind for everything they've done.
Mm-hmm. There have been some negative impacts on some of our members as a result of the decisions the board has made. I think you would probably agree with that as well.
Not everybody agrees with all of our decisions. I'll certainly agree with that.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else for open forum? If not, we have a regular board meeting next Thursday night at 6 o'clock. And as Tom has said, the Wolves and Reds will meet right after that. Fireflies and tailgating was moved from last Saturday night to June 29th at 6:30 at Blowing Springs. And Tia, I'm sure that everything is scheduled the same, but just moved for two weeks. GM meeting is Thursday. GM meeting is Thursday, July 11th at 2:30. That is a closed meeting. And the work session will be the 18th at 9 o'clock. Once again, regular board Thursday, the 25th at 6 o'clock. And then in August, for those of you writing calendars, it's August 8th is the GM meeting, August 15th is the work session, and August 22nd is the regular board meeting. And then we will start budgeting from there. Anything else for the good of the cause? If not, we stand adjourned.